Well, would that take care of the requirement of curb and gutter? In other words, if we leave those in, it looks like to me they still have...
I didn't... I'm only getting to what the proponent has agreed is not part of his recommendation. The other things are still... they're still requesting the others. Whether you grant them or not, that's up to you.
Right.
I'm not trying to establish what you are doing. I'm trying to make sure I clear what Mr. Davis is asking for.
Well, if the only thing we say they don't have to do as far as the right-of-way is required, the sidewalks, what do we eliminate that they won't have to put in curb and gutter?
Okay, well, 10-1 deals with streets and alleys. 10-1-2 deals with grades. And 10-1-3 deals with pavement widths. That's all street.
Right.
Okay.
So what...
And if I've been on, it's all sidewalk.
So what I believe to just kind of simplify it, and please, Wayne, or Don, correct me if I'm wrong here, but what I'm hearing is you have a piece of property that's got 1,600 feet of road frontage. You believe the road... This is... You're asking council to decide whether the road is sufficient to handle nine separate driveways on the road, and the driveways would basically be just a pipe in the existing ditch that serviced the lots. And you're asking for that because it's already on an existing road and because the drainage we would actually cause more harm... This is your work. All right. More harm by adding impervious surface than by leaving it as is.
That's correct.
That's the kind of the... Just kind of shaping what council needs to be thinking about.
Right. But it would be more than just pipe. It would be a pipe and an apron, because if they dedicate the right-of-way, we require an apron.
Okay.
We will still put an apron there.
Yeah.
A paved apron.
Okay.
It just wouldn't be one that ties into curb and gutter.
Exactly. Right. Okay. So just trying to shape what is in council's lane, right?
If you're familiar with that property, it's considerably higher in elevation than the existing roadway. So I would suspect it would be a rather long driveway cutting back into that property. And the amount of piping would have to be rather substantial when it got to the ditch.
It is. And one of the things I didn't point out tonight is that back about almost four weeks ago, if you remember, we were supposed to come to city council at the end of April, and we asked to postpone the application so that we could make sure we were getting information out to people as best we could. And I will tell you, we didn't notify every person in the city of Pecosin, but we did the best we could. We put together copies of plats, asked people to come to the meeting. They walked up and down the street, especially the ones that touched this piece of property, especially on the other side of the road, and asked these people to come to a meeting. And we had about 14 to 16 people that showed up for this meeting to explain it to them. We gave everyone who wanted one a copy of the plat and told them what we were doing. No one that night said that they had a problem with what we were proposing to do. And these are all people who live mainly across the street.
Okay. I just tried to... The only reason I said that is I kind of wanted to shape for not only myself, but for the audience to understand what it is that's actually being asked for. So I think I got that now. I'm not saying we're moving anywhere on that. Are there any other questions, Don? Okay.
I'm certainly available if I can help any further.
All right. We have other people that want to speak on this issue. Jan Andrews?
Jan Andrews, 7 Martha Court. I was at the planning commission meeting for a different reason and heard this public hearing, and it raised some concerns with me. I don't live in that area, so I don't have concerns in that way. And I have no problems with what they want to do with their property, because I think a property owner should be able to do what they want with their property. But my concern is that the precedence that this will set for a homeowner who is essentially becoming a developer, because this isn't a family subdivision, they're not doing it as a minor subdivision, they will be a developer who will develop these lots and sell them just as a developer would, but yet they don't want to pay the cost that a developer would have to pay. And the reason that concerns me is there's a lot right on the corner of Buntingham-Pecosin Avenue by my house that is owned by a family that nothing's happened to it because they can't agree for anybody to buy it. But one day, this could be that same property. And... Or, you know, my thought would be, what if a developer owned this property and it wasn't a family? Would we be considering saying, "Okay, developer, you don't need to do the curb and gutter. You don't need to do the sidewalks. You don't need to do this." I think you have to treat everybody the same, whether they're an individual homeowner or whether they're a developer. You know, we put these things in place for a reason. And I think anytime we can get some curb and gutter and we can get rid of some ditches and get our roads widened, I think is a good thing. If you don't want to do that, then we should change the, you know, change the ordinances. But they're there for a reason, I would assume. And my fear is that we allow a homeowner to get away with not doing those things, and then a developer is going to come in and buy an eight-acre parcel and is going to come to you and say, "But you let them do it. You waived it for them. Here's the exact same circumstance. Why wouldn't you waive it for me?" I mean, heck, if this is the way it is, then I might start going and looking at some eight-acre properties that I could develop without having to spend these costs. You know, I understand why they wouldn't want to do this, because it is costly. But finance is not a reason for hardship, which is why I think the planning commission denied that. And so I would support their decision. And the reasons that they gave, I think those are valid reasons to not allow this, you know, for a homeowner. They do have the option of doing a family subdivision or a minor subdivision, and then they don't have any of these requirements. You know, we have that in place for them to do that. I just wouldn't want to see us open the door for a developer to come in, because there's a lot of small lots like this in Pecosin, and be able to develop and get away with not doing those things and getting rid of that development cost.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mary Clemmons.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Mary Clemmons. I live at 6 Raymond Court, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23703. My middle name is Bradshaw. I'm a drive here with roots. Basically, I'm representing the Pecosin Historical Commission. I'm their secretary. We do have concerns. We just found out about this today. One of the issues that we find is that it is actually part of the Back Creek plantations, which it was either Mr. Pettis' land or Mr. Gilbert Simmons' land, which these were 17th century plantations, early land patents. Local residents have brought to our attention that they have found items in their yards within this area, which include a jetton, which is a Dutch counting coin, kind of like you would use with an abacus, an Elizabethan coin, a Bellar bean... A fragment of a Bellar bean bottle, which is a German beer bottle, which is a 17th century artifact, as well as a dated bottle dated 1644, borderware, which is extremely rare, and that's usually found in places like Jamestown or surrounding early sites like that, and scrawfidoire, which is also found at Jamestown. I am by profession an archaeologist. I do not work for a particular company. Right now, my specialty is material culture. So that's... I kind of know a lot about the stuff people bring in. The other problem that we're seeing is the cemetery. You can have a cemetery with marked stones, yes, but what is the exact perimeters of that cemetery? Because a lot of times, the graves are either marked with field stones or they are marked with wooden markers, and they disintegrate. So you really don't have an exact boundary until you've removed the soil. So it's nice that they're planning to preserve what's there, but I think the extent of what's there needs to be looked at. There are 17 marked graves there. Jesse Fay Forrest in November of 1967 did the survey there. The graves are of the Callis family, the Freeman family, the Wilson family, the Hopkins, the Hunts, and the Warrenhams. So, like I said, there's probably a lot more graves that are not marked. I know from, you know, dealing with situations like this, especially at Taylor Farms, they actually had to reroute part of their development and redo roads and actually put green space in, because the cemetery for the original Charles Parish Glebe was actually much larger than the existing stones. And when the soil was removed, they found that out. So that had to be redone. So what the Historical Commission is suggesting is either a professional survey be... archaeological survey be done of this property, or you use LiDAR, which is satellite technology. They use it at NASA. That can tell you the outlines of areas. And also historical research needs to be done before anything really goes forward, because you might be, you know, this might be a really significant area. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else here that... Yes, sir?
I have to take this off. City Council Honorable Body, my name is Leonard Poniatowski, and I live at 23 Bayview Drive in Pecosin. I've been a resident here since 1992, and I see some familiar faces from the neighborhood. And I would like nothing better than to see 13 new homes come up on that property, but not the way they're proposing it. We went to the planning commission meeting, and I spoke there, and Bledis... Mr. David spoke too. And we talked about a lot of things. It was... I thought it was a very comprehensive meeting. Yet, from what I gather from the council, you people certainly have inquisitive minds because you've really dug deeper than we did last week. At least, that's my opinion, with all due respects to the chairperson. It just amazed me what you all dug up and how many of these variances you could give away. I should say, do away with. But I'd like to speak. I was the one and only individual that appeared at that particular meeting. And when we talk about undue hardship, it's not financial hardship on the part of the owners, and yet Mr. Davis, is it? Davis? Yeah. He kind of alluded to that in his remarks today, that there might be some financial hardship. That has nothing to do with this proposal. The hardships have to be inherent and attached to the land or the property. Now, my major complaint was, and was that we talk about impervious soil and water coming off, and 13 homes coming in. And in our daily press a couple of weeks ago, one of our people here in Pecosin, and I can't find his name exactly, but he talked about a one-story home or a two-story home, 3,000 square feet, would have maybe a little more than 1,000 square feet of roof. That dumps 600 gallons per square foot, pardon me, for the roof during a one-inch rainstorm. And you can see what happened this week. We've had a lot... We had a one-inch or better this morning. And if we've got 13 homes times 600, that's a lot of water. But what happens is, I'm downstream. And years ago, the city took and put a clapper on the drainpipe that I have running between my property and the next-door property. Therefore, when the tide comes up and we get a two-inch rainfall, my street floods, my front yard floods, my garage floods, and if it's significant enough, it will come into the vents underneath my house and get in there. So what I'd like to see, as I said before, what I'd like to see is that they control the water flow in this particular property. And by that, there's got to be ways that they can actually do this in conjunction with widening roads. And that's a very important part, because one of the gentlemen on the planning commission works for BDOT, and he made a point that the roads have to be widened if they're going to develop this property. But things have changed since the last time we discussed this at the planning commission. I was under the impression there would be one way... One way... You talked about coming off of the turn on Bayview and going up to Hunts Neck as an egress-ingress for the neighborhood. Now, we're talking about 13 separate entrances. And I have to tell you, that was my impression.
Nine.
Well, no, I'm sorry.
Nine.
Well, nine homes. Nine separate entrances. And of course, that puts the owners on the property owners. And as this young lady mentioned, that opens a door to a lot of development and a lot of developers who will lean back on council and the planning commission and say, "Look, here's what you got to do. You've done it for them, you do it for us." Now, I personally would like to see the road widened. I live back there. We've got school buses come through, we've got cars coming through, 8:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the afternoon. It's not heavily traveled, but the road does need to be widened according to the codes. And if they widen, they really need to put in curb and gutter. And if they put in curb and gutter, they've got to put drainpipe in. And if they put in drainpipe, it's going to end up in my front yard. Regardless of what happens, it's going to end up in my front yard. If they build nine homes, if they build 13, if they put one way in and out, if they put nine ways in or out, I'm in trouble. And I'm in trouble now, I'll be in trouble again. So as I said at the beginning of my remarks, I'd like nothing better than to see nine beautiful homes on that property. And if they can't afford to subdivide, that has no bearing on variances. If they can afford it, they ought to do it. Talking about nine lots, it's probably one of the best places in Pecosin, the proudest place in Pecosin, off Bayview Drive. And I don't know how many of you have got down there and looked, but it really is really, really nice. And we don't want to mess it up with just one or two homes. So if he builds one house for him, one house for his son, one house for his daughter, that's three homes. There's some provision. He can do that. But what's to stop him from taking the other six lots that he proposes? Or, in that case, make them a little smaller, 10 or 15 lots? He's got to go back to the whole thing again. So my solution to this thing, and it's probably another solution, but it's just a thought for the board, not the board, I'm sorry, for the council, that water problems are a major issue in our neighborhood. The roads have to be widened.
And I know that's terrible.
They've got to come up to code. They've done it at Drake Landing, they've done it at the one that Ms. Best talked about on the corner down the street, and they're building more down across from the car wash in Pecosin. And they're all going according to code. They're putting in curb gutter, fixing the roads. The people at Drake's Landing, I think they... I'm not sure. I think they have either 10 or 11 home sites in there. And they have widened the street in front of their site, that is Hunts Neck. They put like about a five-foot apron on that. Now, I'm not an engineer, so... But if that sufficed, fine. But they did put in gutter. They put in gutter that went to the ditch. And we've got ditch on both sides of Bayview Drive down where I live. I happen to be fortunate enough to have curb and gutter, but one door up from me, they don't have it. They've just got a flat face. The ditch comes around, and he runs right past there and right into my pipe going out to the bay. So when the time is right, I get it really well. I mean, nor'easters were bad enough, hurricanes were bad enough, but now I get it when it rains one or two inches and we get high tide, I'm susceptible to flooding. So that's my major concern here. I've got to do something about that.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
That's right. And I do want to say one thing, though, that the planning commission board did a wonderful job. They did a wonderful job last week, and I thought they covered it quite well till I looked on the computer this afternoon, this evening, about quarter to seven, and I realized, whoops, I got to come and talk to you guys. Anyway, thanks for listening to me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Just remind you, what you have before you now is a request for an exception. It's controlled by Section 11-2 of your ordinances. And it says that you have the authority to grant an exception from the requirements of the ordinance, and it may be granted by city council under these conditions. When, in their opinion, being city council's opinion, topography or special or unusual circumstances render full compliance an undue hardship to the subdivider. That's one. Or where such exception would be in the general public interest. So that's two categories of exception. The general public interest being a very broad category, but the other one being your opinion that either topography or special or unusual circumstances render full compliance and undue hardship on the developer. That's the authority you have to grant the variance that's been requested.
So kind of building on that, because I'm hoping to hear something to table this and talk about it, but if that's said, one of the concerns that I've heard here is precedent. Okay? And precedent is important to council. This is not... If we're finding this as a special thing for that particular use, you know, that particular property, is that setting a precedent?
Not in my opinion. You are finding, in your opinion, that this special circumstance exists, and therefore a variance is justified. And that is only a justification for the unique... Whatever the unique conditions you see in this case, and they are applied to this particular piece of property, another piece of property coming before you, it has no precedent, as far as I'm concerned. You have to, again, find an opinion that based on that particular piece of property, then these exceptions exist that you can grant to variance.
Okay. Is there any member of council prepared to make a motion either way?
Mr. Mayor, I was prepared to modify the conditions, but based on what the city attorney says, I don't think we can really say that there's a hardship that exists other than financial. I don't see anything totally unusual about this piece of property that would separate it from any other eight-acre parcel that... So anyway, I move that we...
So let me... Can I just give you my thought process on it? I think I could argue this one.
I don't know that you...
Ten different ways.
Can you really do that unless we have a motion?
All right. Well, give me a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution denying variances to the city subdivision ordinance as it relates to the preliminary plan submitted for a proposed subdivision of property located at the intersection of Bayview Drive and Hunts Neck Road, tax map number 0501000004.
I second it.
Okay. Motion made. Second that we deny the ordinance. All right. So my counterargument to that is the one thing that I heard there that was intriguing, I'm not saying a deciding factor for me, but intriguing, was the fact that if we put in curb and gutter and we, in fact, increase the impervious surface on that parcel, then we basically say we want more ponds, because we're basically tying their hands into handling the drainage from that curb and gutter that is today handled by those open swale ditches. With that being said, I believe that the development standards that we will apply would be that drainage from the development cannot exceed its previous amount. Hence, those drainage structures that are existing would be sufficient. I'm not there yet, okay? So I want to make sure that everybody understands, this is not me saying, hey, I think this is a good idea. I'm saying I heard enough change to what I'm seeing here tonight that I think that we owe it another discussion. And I'm not saying I'm going to support it then, but I, you know, this could be the easy way out, well, you think all developers should do this. But I do believe that this particular piece of property with 1,600 feet of road front is different. But I'll go with the majority of council on this. I just don't want us to make it harder than it has to be if we're not setting a precedent. That's why I asked that question.
If we vote no on that motion, can we bring another motion to table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
No. If we vote no, then we've denied the...
You've denied it.
No, we have not denied it. His motion is to deny, not to approve.
Right.
So the motion would...
The motion would fail.
You would... It would fail. Then you could make a motion to table and discuss it further. But that's just one... I'm just one of you. So I'm just saying, I can see arguing this, but what really has changed my... I think I was originally just prepared to just say, okay, well, that's it. You know, it's just too much. But once we got rid of about 10 sections, you know, of what we didn't dig into well enough, I guess, is it seems like we're talking about curb and gutter that doesn't exist today and changing the topography to actually increase the runoff from the road to somewhere. Not the topography, but the drainage structure.
I have two issues. One is the multiple driveways coming onto Bayview Drive. And as Mr. Poniatowski said, the road is narrow. Going around that sharp double turn, I remember when the bushes were across the street on the property, and the kids rode their bikes, they always called that suicide corner, because you couldn't see anything coming from either direction. And of course, the bushes are gone now, but it's still a very narrow road, and people go around, they take their half out of the middle when they go around that turn. So it is rather dangerous as it is. So widening that section would be a godsend for a lot of people, I can tell you that. The other thing, I know what was said about precedent, but you try to convince another developer of that. And you look at Hunts Neck Estates, they have at least that much frontage on two roads. And they had to comply, and it's improved that area tremendously here on Hunts Neck and Edwards Road. So those are the issues that I have with it.
I'm just...
I'd just like to know, oh, I'm sorry. As far as the impervious surface, the post runoff can't be any greater than what it is right now.
That's what I'm saying. So why isn't the existing structure?
There's no way that adding the curb and gutter is going to add to it, if the post can't be any more than what it is right now.
Well, you're taking out the ditch.
We're taking out the ditch, but they're going to have to contain the runoff in some fashion.
They're going to have to contain the runoff, and what I'm saying is, we're tying ourselves into a pond. I don't care.
That's a nature beast.
That's similar to Drake's Landing. They had to put in a retention pond, and put in curbs and gutter and a retention pond to take care of the added runoff. And I know the neighbors in that area were very concerned about that.
Which one's Drake's Landing?
That's off Hunts Neck Road, as you come down, almost across from.
Is that the one with the picture? That one?
On the left.
Because that's not a standard, that's not, that's not a standard street, right?
No, no, this is on Hunts Neck.
Drake's is across from Robert's.
Yeah, right across from Robert's.
All right. Well, like I said, I can see, I can see arguing it any, many different ways. That's why I'd like to see us just talk about it.
I'm just kind of interested in about how long does it take, who does it, and what does it cost for an archeological survey? In case there are, or there is.
Sorry?
Oh, you've already done one?
I've got to talk through the whole show.
Oh, okay. I just.
Can we just note that in a minute? It won't already been done. Okay. But anyway, all right, so we got a motion made, and seconded, that we deny the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
In the sidewalks, we, okay, the motion is to deny, but they were requesting a variance on the sidewalks such that they would eventually go in, just not immediately?
Yeah, I was thinking that's probably not a good solution, because they would just be pieced made.
But it's doable.
Can I, can I jump in on that? My understanding, correct me, Debbie, if I'm wrong, they're requesting a variance in the sidewalks. The comment about having future owners install it is not incorporated here as a condition, so that is an aspirational comment.
That's something we could create.
Absolutely, we could, we could.
If we wanted that, which is better than no sidewalks, in my opinion.
Agreed. I don't think anybody, I think we all agree the sidewalks would be necessary. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Judy, please. This is a motion to deny the ordinance. All right.
Councilman Ayer?
Yes. Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Vernal?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is sale of city-owned property at 826 Pecoson Avenue.
Mr. Counsel, Ms. Mayor, members of the council, you will recall that last year, in April, you provided authorization for the staff to move forward to acquire property located at 826 Pecoson Avenue. Someone, Kevin, could you put up my one schematic on that to help the public know where this Council will recall, and for the benefit of members of the public, this is a 2.21-acre parcel which was located on Municipal Drive, which is the, is the main road that you would take to go between where the proxim recreation building is on your left and the pool is in back. On the right-hand side is a very nice house, and behind that is a piece of undeveloped property that looks as if it's two parcels, but in fact, it was one parcel. With your authorization, we acquired that piece of property for a total net cost of And we took possession of it in the summer, began some upkeep, worked on the inside to make improvements in preparation for sale, and subdivided the property such that the vacant land in the back, which is approximately 1.325 acres, was subdivided from the home site, with the idea always to get the house on the market for fair market sale. The city's interest was in the residual in the back, which is property that has been used, which is the red area, as you're looking at the screen, is the residual. The yellow borders on Pecoson Avenue and Municipal Drive, as you're oriented on the screen, is to the right of the yellow and red, essentially striped down the middle. We worked through the summer and the fall to get the property ready for sale. Property went up for sale in the month of April. Within one week, we received what I determined to be a very strong and good cash offer from Mr. Jackie E., excuse me, Mrs. Jackie E. and Mr. Dabney H. Gills, Sr., both of whom are here and prepared to speak if you have questions. They also may want to speak as part of the public hearing. But for the benefit of those that are at home, so you can get a sort of sense of how this all works, the, the offer is for $320,000. It is a cash offer. When you take out commissions and other things that the city has had to do or will do to sell the property, we're looking at net sale proceeds of $302,665, which includes a half percent contingency for repairs stemming from the home inspection. You see the other costs, the cost of subdividing, the cost of readying the property for sale, and the cost of acquisition. And when you total it all up, the city stands, based on this offer, to make $653 in net profit while maintaining 1.325 acres in the back, which is the red area. We have, we have helped to clean up that property and invested in it. I think we've improved its value significantly, which was recognized in the form of the offer. Before you this evening is a public hearing to consider that proposal from Mr. and Mrs. Gills to purchase the property for $320,000. And I've already gone through the particulars of which one. Because this is property owned by the city, a city, a public hearing is required. Unlike your normal public hearings to sell property in which you're accepting offers with your consent, we went through a real estate agent, so this evening, the decision before you is either to accept the offer as proposed or to reject it. If you choose to reject it, the Gills or any other person may make a subsequent offer, which, if preliminarily accepted by me, would then be subject to its own public hearing.
All right. Any questions, council? Okay, so basically Randy explained what we intended to do. All right, and the process is work through, so I'll open the public hearing on sale of city-owned property at 826 Pecoson Avenue, and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak on this subject. If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution of council of the city of Pecoson, Virginia ratifying and approving the sale of city-owned property at 826 Pecoson Avenue, tax map parcel number 1901000215.
Second. A motion made and seconded, and in support of that, we hope to be good neighbors. Okay, so Judy, if you could, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Very much. All right, under unfinished business, we have a resolution making an appointment to the school board.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the school board with the following names inserted for the western precinct, Ann L. Rollins, and for the eastern precinct, Ms. Jennifer Mosteller, whose terms will expire June 30th, 2019.
Second. A motion made and seconded, we make those appointments. Those two fine ladies, any questions or comments?
Comment, I think it's Jennifer's birthday today, so happy birthday to her.
Well, we just gave her a new, new school board member for her birthday, and the return of one old one.
No, no, Jennifer Mosteller.
Oh, okay.
Former appointee.
I'm not sure that was a gift.
Exactly.
Yeah, right. Okay. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, next under, under new business is G2, which is resolution approving additional compensation for the city manager and city attorney. Is there a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving additional compensation for the city manager and the city attorney.
Second.
You have to insert, I think we have to insert the figures. I actually took a stab at it with a three percent salary increase effective to be applied as deferred compensation. And under the city manager, it was to raise his hourly rate to $350.
You mean the city attorney?
I'm city attorney, sorry.
City manager would love that amount.
Well, I want y'all, you know, anyway. All right, so can you amend the motion? I mean, do you amend?
I amend the motion in that the city manager's compensation will be three percent as deferred compensation, that the city attorney's hourly rate will be $350 an hour.
Okay, very good. All right, is there a second to that? Second? Motion made and seconded, I'll speak on behalf of both of these gentlemen. I will tell you that the city attorney's fee is $100 lower than our surrounding localities. That should be known, because it sounds like a lot until you actually operate in office and all of the staff, and we appreciate his services for us. And we just love everything you do, Wayne. I mean, you, and you lead us.
Kept everybody out of jail so far.
You lead, you keep us out of jail, and you stay on the issues and not lead us, and we appreciate that. And for Randy, what I will tell you is stellar job, and through a, through the worst recession that most people can remember, in raising this city to the highest performing financial city, I think, in this area. And that is a leadership trait that we want to reward, and we appreciate that. So any other questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Next item under new business is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2016.
Mr. Mayor, since Teresa was kind enough to stay with us till almost 10 o'clock, I'd like to ask her to come forward and make a brief presentation with regard to this.
Brief.
Need some camera time.
No, I definitely don't need any.
We do appreciate you staying here.
Oh, no.
Hopefully, they didn't close the bridge.
No, not yet, not yet. No, it's just a few additional appropriations, basically in the general fund, you have some asset forfeiture money, citizen core donations, the April Projects Funds. There's a transfer from the general fund of $35,000 that the fire department would like to use to match a grant that they're hoping to get, and that's really the biggest, the biggest thing there. And then in special revenue fund, we're just chewing up some of the AGP grants and the FMA grant, appropriating that entire grant that we received during the year.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2015 and 16.
Second.
A motion made and seconded, that we adopt that ordinance. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Last item under new business is a resolution making an appointment to the library advisory board.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize to council, I kind of dropped the ball on this one, it didn't start soon enough, since one of our, this advisory board mirrors the makeup of the council.
Okay. And so. Motion to defer?
Yeah, yeah. Move that we postpone.
Trying to cover you.
And this is a central.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so motion postponed until the next meeting?
Second.
Yeah, my second.
Okay, they're all, they're all claiming. Okay, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Comments of the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I have only one item this evening. Normally, we'd do this earlier in the meeting, but we had a whole lot of folks that were ready to talk, so I made a quick decision to move it to the end. I'd like to introduce to you and to the community folks that are still watching, our graduate management assistant, remember a few months ago, I talked to you about that, and you gave me the go-ahead, try it, Dan O'Connell is his name. You come on forward, Dan.
Actually, we bring him to the next meeting and let him talk to everybody when they're probably still.
That's probably good. As you recall, he's got two main focuses to his job. One is to assist with the comprehensive plan update process, and that's where he's been spending most of his time, although I did take him to regional day last week, and he didn't quit after that.
And then he went through all these public hearings this evening, so, you know. And he sat there with a smile on his face. I noticed.
He is a graduate of William &amp; Mary with a bachelor's in government, and has his master's degree from the University of Virginia in foreign affairs. And anyway, Dan, if you want to introduce yourself a little bit?
Yeah, hello, everybody. My name is Dan O'Connell. It's nice to meet you all, and see you all. So, yeah, as Randy said, I have a bachelor's from William &amp; Mary and a master's from UVA from last year. I've been a resident of Louisa County, Virginia, since 2006, right outside of Charlottesville. Before that, my parents and I lived up in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, which is a small island city, much like this, but northern and a little larger. But, yeah, I'm very interested in learning about local government, so I'm hoping to learn as much as possible from you all and from the employees of Pecoson, the city of Pecoson, and I hope to do a lot of work with you and with the city, and try and help out the city in any way I can through the next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, and we're welcome. So I have some. So I got. Councilman Vernal?
Only thing, just, I think everybody knows, the airboat has arrived. Saw it down in front of the fire station. Again, many thanks to the, what's the fellow's name that wrote the grant?
Joe Breeden.
Yes, he did. And that's fantastic, he's gotten a lot of good things for it.
Yes, he has. I must point that out. Councilman Green?
Two things, Mr. Mayor. One is the food bank tomorrow, and it's being hosted by the Kiwanis Club, 10 to 1. So if you qualify, please come out at the old city hall site. It's always a good event and a good cause. The other thing is, I would like to propose that we think about looking at our, the boards that we have said must mirror, other than the school board, must mirror city council. The applicants are getting, are dwindling. And maybe we should think about one representative from each precinct, and then if there are no other applicants, to make two that we can pick from citywide, or make, in other words, what we'd be making the rest of the board at large.
Okay, can you take that on and bring us a report on what it would take to do that?
Absolutely. Give you a list of how they're all set up and.
Thank you.
Ultimately, maybe also look into outreach, how we can encourage more people to know about and want to be involved in these boards.
I can move those audience for visitors to the end, so they get to listen to it.
Especially when we have people that volunteer for things, we need to use them when they volunteer. I think that's very important.
Councilman Ayer?
Nothing.
Okay. Councilwoman Crawford?
Yeah, I did want to mention, I was so excited to see all of the turnout regarding my street, whether we agree or disagree on what the best thing to do is, and I don't know that any, I don't know that there is a best thing, other than people to follow the rules. I appreciate the input and the enthusiasm and the fact that people are paying attention and the communication, so that was wonderful. Also, I wanted to mention, I did send out, everybody, please, if you haven't already, and you're gone, so I hope you're listening, sign up for Nextdoor, I think it's .com, it might be .org, but it's the, the police sponsor it. All of the local police stations, I think, have their own Nextdoor platform, and Pecoson Police Department also sponsors one, and Bunting Lane specifically has a Nextdoor community. And I sent out a notice to everybody. community, and I sent out a notice to everybody, so everybody on Lodge, Church, Holly, Floyd, and Bunting should have been notified if you are a member of Nextdoor, so join that if you haven't already. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Just more of a clarification. Ms. Andrews brought up about when we put stuff on the TV channel. I know we don't put minutes up until after the next meeting when they're approved, but can we put up video meetings? What's the general procedure, do we know? Generally, when do the TV or the visual portion of meetings get put up?
I think besides the finances, you can do the audiovisual, is there anything else that you do?
A few things in our office. We do try to get them up the next day, if not the next day, then the following day. We did have a problem with the planning commission leaving.
But generally, we do it the next day.
In the next couple of days.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious about that, that's all.
Okay. Thanks. The other thing, I've got former council that, as y'all know, Randy and I traveled to New York City for, on behalf of the city of Pecosin, to talk to the bond reading agencies of Moody's and Standard &amp; Port. It was an eventful trip. We had a good story to tell. It's easy to tell Pecosin's story up there, and we don't have any promises, but we believe that the story was well-received, and I guess we'll hear, we've asked for a quick turnaround on this.
Should know within a week.
So, you know, what I would say is, we'll know within a week, but why is that important, I guess, just to make sure the citizens are clear? Why would that be important to us is, Randy and I talked a lot about the future, and we talked a lot about the future being the middle school, and what, you know, basically looking out 10 years, and that this strategy was really a part of the overall, what do you have to do to take on a multimillion-dollar program that we need and minimize the impact to the taxpayers? And so, we kind of focused on that discussion. So, I think it was well-received that we were looking out instead of, you know, and again, I will tell you what I said about Randy and the financial management through the years that we've been here, the fact that we have self-carrying funds now that we did not used to have, that being the sewer fund, the recycling and solid waste fund. It's Randy and them, but it's also this council, and we stress that up there, I want y'all to know that, that we stress that the council was fully participating in all this, and that you were very proud of what we've accomplished, so, and that was also well-received. So, just wanted to report on that, since I didn't get back with you guys since we got back, it was a lightning trip. We went on Tuesday and came back on Wednesday, and saw as much of New York City as I wanted to see. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. A motion made and seconded, we adjourn. Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and we are done.